I'd like to call a meeting to order, a study session of Bloomfield Hills School's Board of Education on July 13, 2023, time is 6:32 PM. Secretary, could we have attendance, please?
We are short three board members this evening. They are Trustee Hill, Trustee Southard, and Trustee Col.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Van Gemmer. We do have four board members, so we do have a forum. So we will continue on with the board meeting. Next on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item three. Before we move to item three, though, I'd be remiss if I don't acknowledge our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Karen Hillibrand, who is moving on to a new position in the John C. Intermediate School District. Karen's been here for 18 years, worn numerous hats, been tireless in her support, and made innumerable contributions. So Karen, thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
And we wish you well in your new role.
Thank you.
So with that, the next item on the agenda is item three, election drop box easement agreement discussion and request for approval. We've got Martin Brooks here. Martin, over to you.
Great, thank you. I have a, can I just pass them this way?
Yes.
With a map and then a little PowerPoint that goes, oops, maybe I sent too many away. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk about something that's just really exciting to me. I've been working out for a little bit here with Mr. Watson and other members of the administration, which is to continue and deepen the relationship between the Bloomfield Township Clerk's office and the township itself and the school district in collaboration to make, you know, for democracy, for elections in the township. I've passed out a map and a little PowerPoint just to talk about, you know, about this and try to answer any questions you have through the presentation or afterwards. The map is, you know, a nice representation of, you know, of the collaboration that's been in place for so long. You know, I've highlighted on the right-hand side the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven precincts that are located in school buildings around the Bloomfield Hills School District where community members who are registered to vote and eligible come and cast their ballot during elections. As you know, there'll be elections this November. And they're at school buildings really spread out throughout the district, and without your support, we couldn't really be doing this. And also, on this map shows a, in a nice sort of picture form, the, you know, superior location that has been proposed for an elections drop box. It's in the blue box on the right-hand side. It's presently Eastover Elementary School, or maybe presently you'd call it Blooming Kids East. I'm not sure what it'll be called, but it's a proposed location for an elections drop box. And moving on to the little PowerPoint presentation, I wanted to note, of course, that we're working already in my office to administer a special election November 7. On the ballot will be the proposal to renew the district's sinking fund village. And this will be our first opportunity to implement many of the changes from proposal two. One of those changes is the core thing we're talking about today, which is the drop boxes. The next item on the picture here is the precincts, a map of the township, and for us, anyway, the precincts that are participating in the Bloomfield Hills School District election. You can see those in this map. Of course, there are other communities involved, the city of Bloomfield Hills, West Bloomfield, parts of Troy as well, that'll be assisting in this important decision. And so we look forward to working on this election. We look forward to implementing some of the changes from proposal two. Proposal two is, going on the next slide, proposal two is a constitutional amendment that voters passed in November of 2022. And one of the items in that constitutional amendment was the requirement that every community have at least one elections drop box and that there be an additional box for every 15,000 registered voters. And Bloomfield Township has, you know, 38,000 roughly registered voters. I say roughly because it actually changes, you know, hour by hour, day by day, and, but they're roughly around 38,000 registered voters. So we have to have three drop boxes. And by constitutional rule, we also have to have them spread out around the community. And that's where this map comes in handy, you know. Eastover is a perfect spot to service the eastern side of Bloomfield Township. The other location is circled here in the south central area, and that's actually Village Hall for the Bloomfield Village area. And then we have two drop boxes circled in the center where township buildings are housed. On the presentation, again, you can see of, first, a bird's eye view of most of the property on Westview Road where Eastover Elementary is. And in the bottom left corner is one of the fire stations for Bloomfield Township. The area we're talking about is the parking lot that's right next to the fire station. Moving on to the next slide, this is a, an engineering, it's also a bird's eye view, but an engineering sketch of the way the parking lot looks presently. And the markings on the lot, you can see that it's typically a bus loop, I believe, come in and go to the right and loop around and come back out. Below is the proposed spot for the elections drop box. You can notice that it does not disrupt the flow of traffic as presently configured, but does allow for folks that want to drive up to the drop box to depart from the counterclockwise motion to go into the drop box and then exit in the same way that they normally would. The only thing that'll be placed there is additional striping, a cement pad with bollards, the drop box itself, which is, I don't have a picture of it, but it's a pedestal type. It's not a big sort of mailbox, it's smaller than a mailbox. There'll also be a post there with a video camera if this easement agreement is approved by the township, by the school board. The township board met and considered the easement agreement this past Monday evening and unanimously passed the easement agreement. It's a document that was prepared by council for township and by council for the school district and has been approved by both, containing the required, the elements that are required, both a construction easement for the work to be done per the agreement prior to the end of the summer, end of August, prior to the end of August, and then ongoing easement so that the township and voters can access the drop box during elections. It'll be on constant video surveillance even when there is not an election. When there's not an election, it'll also be locked and we'll have a locked bag over the top of it so people are not using it or accessing it. During elections, the bags are moved, the locks are unlocked, and folks can pull up and drop a ballot in or walk over and drop a ballot in. My office would be there, someone from my office or myself will be there every day. We're open, plus every calendar day as we close to the election to check on the status of the box and empty the box. And that's what the easement agreement will allow us to do with a provision to cancel the easement should the school district decide to sell the property upon some, you know, proper advance notice to my office so we can find a new spot, because we're required by the constitution to have it. So that's a quick summary of the drop box. Hope you can see why I'm really super excited about it. It's giving voters another opportunity to participate in democracy. It's perfectly located both on the, from a geographic standpoint, and it's located right next to one of our township facilities so we can easily bring a fiber line to the box for video surveillance and bring it back to the township offices. So that's my little discussion about it, and if you've got any questions.
Thank you, Martin. Any discussion?
I just had your question. I'm allowed to utilize the drop box since we have multiple precincts.
Yeah, so anybody in, any registered voter in Bloomfield Township should be using the box, and those are the folks eligible to use it, both to drop in, say, an application for an absentee ballot or to drop an absentee ballot in the box. There's nothing that prevents someone from another jurisdiction from dropping something in there, but that's, you know, that's something that clerks everywhere deal with, you know, when we empty it, we would identify which ones, if there's a wayward ballot from Troy or Birmingham, we can identify that and get it to the right place, hopefully on time. But yes, that's just the Bloomfield Township voters.
Did you go through a study of other areas and how did you come about this location? Just curious if you.
You know, I did a study just in the back of my head and knowing, my familiarity with the community and the longstanding relationship with election law and support the district does provide, I thought, why not just try it and ask? Superintendent Watson has been very supportive of this, and we've done some due diligence to, you know, work it up in a nice legal way to satisfy the concerns of the school district and the needs of the township for elections. But no study.
Gotcha. Just curious if you're looking for other areas or if you have.
Well, true, so, you know, you can tell from the map, an area that doesn't have a box right now is the southwest corner of the township. And it's something on my mind to try to, you know, to try to capture if possible.
Mr. Watson, I guess I'm a little worried that Eastover might not be as convenient as you're hopeful for. I think we probably don't know enough about the interference that the construction is going to have at that location. I texted Brian and Jake while we were talking to figure out, like, if that would be a pretty significant hindrance, and I'm not even sure that that site will be available for occupancy, even to be a polling site, or how the parking lot might get blocked off for equipment. So I think we might have to put him in touch with Bart Malo to really see if that location will be available at Eastover.
I get the extra attention, so.
For this, for this very coming, yes, for this next election cycle.
That's a good point.
I'm pretty sure that that already happened.
All I can say is that Jake has been involved from day one.
This has been ongoing for, what, three months? The planning for this has been going on for the last two to three months, and so we've had many meetings about it. So I think we'll be, I trust that Jake has vetted it out, and it sounds like in those multiple meetings he had, so.
And we discussed the staging area, and we'll dictate to Bart Malo what area is successful as far as the staging area when they go in for construction, let's not. What we can't have happen is impeding people's opportunity to participate in voting. That is key. So that is something that, when I talk to Martin, not only a community member, but a former board member, we need to make sure that everyone in this community has every opportunity to go vote and be part of the democratic process.
And from the board's perspective, we're here to approve the easement that this group can be responsible for, maybe should we get to the drop box, you know, so.
Right.
Just, I think just so you're aware that, and make sure that that's all taken care of, if you're, whatever, but.
Yeah, I'll do whatever I can to collaborate.
I think it's a problem providing the easement and that it's something, Elias is going to do something about it, address that, just so you're aware potentially. It looks like it's off to the side enough, like, I'm, my, my application.
Martin, did you say that you're going to add the additional lighting in there as well, or a ballast or something?
There's a video camera, but not additional lighting planned, but that's something that we, you know, it's not, the easement agreement would allow that if, for instance, we thought about it more and that was a need that could be addressed.
Okay.
There'll be a line brought for the video camera, but it could easily add electricity if that's needed.
That might be needed in that location.
I was going to say it's very dark.
It is. There is a light that's on the grass over there, but it does seem like it's a little challenged.
I was there when we were campaigning, and I remember getting there and like, oh, I don't know, I can't see very much, so it gets very dark and there's not a big one there.
And during that season, it's darker.
Yeah, it's very dark.
I'll add that to the list of things for the engineers to plan for.
Just to consider, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be a bad thing in general to have lighting there, like, above and beyond just this. That's something I remembered on my list of sitting out there and thinking, oh, this is really hard to walk safely when you can't see where you're going, so.
I don't think that there's been any improvements to the lighting since I've been with the district at that location.
Thank you for that point.
And just so, because I'm trying to envision, so is the intention people would drive up to it and drop it or park in, or either way?
Intentions, they drive up.
Okay.
So it's set so that when you pull straight in, you're able to access the drop box right as you pull in.
Yeah.
They're almost like a mail carrier drop, because I've used one in Clarkston before.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll work on, with our construction, it means there's a dirt rope for people to drive on, then there'll be a dirt rope for people to drive on.
Great.
But I'm sure we'll figure it out. Like I said, we, this is not all of a sudden, we've been working on this for three months, and, you know, from our end, you know, Dana took a look at it on behalf of Clark Hill and made adjustments she felt was necessary, and it's kind of why we're here tonight. I side 100% with Martin, feel strongly about this, and have an accessibility for people to be able to vote.
Well, I agree. I think this is great access to the area that doesn't have a box right now, and we need to make it easier to vote and make democracy work in a way that works for everyone. So I'm so glad to see that.
Absolutely, and also become very popular.
Yeah.
Yes.
For all, I'm guessing.
Any further discussion? Something like a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the drop box easement agreement as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Notion passes for zero.
Thank you, Board. I'm super excited about this. It's going to be great.
Awesome.
I'll work with the administration on the board to make sure that we address lighting or any other issues that come up with construction and so on.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Control your heart, both of you.
Yes.
Martin, we'll get you the executed agreement, and that's the Glenn Dr. South words back.
Wonderful. Great. I love getting them out. It's like if this is hard, but better.
I know. Those are awesome.
All right. Next item on the agenda, item four, Superintendent's search update. So we've got a communication going out to the community tomorrow. Can give a quick update today. So on Tuesday, July 11, the board held a special meeting for the purpose of reviewing all candidates who had applied for the position of superintendent. The board selected five candidates to interview for this role, and there are two interviews planned for July 17, two for July 18, and one for July 19. The candidates selected are James Wall, Carol DeGlio, Nick Russo, Ernesto Mathias, and Roy Bishop. And so they'll be interviewed on July 17, 18, and 19. So on July 20, the board will hold a special meeting at 6:00 PM right here to determine which of these candidates will participate in the second round interviews. So the finalist interviews will be held the following week, on Tuesday, July 25, and Wednesday, July 26, at 6:00 PM at the Boot Center. All these meetings and interviews are open to the public and will be livestreamed and recorded for later viewing. Those present at the interviews and watching via livestream recordings will be provided an opportunity to give feedback to the board for consideration. So students, staff, and community members are invited to engage with the second round, i.e. the final candidates, and that'll be facilitated by the Michigan Leadership Institute on July 25 and 26, right here at the Boot Center. So the staff engagement for the first candidate will be on July 25 from 1 to 2:00 PM, student engagement from 2:15 to 3:15, and community engagement from 3:30 to 4:30 PM. And the second candidate will follow that same schedule on Wednesday, July 26. So there'll be a communication going out from the district either tonight or tomorrow, and so please visit the Superintendent's search webpage for updates and more information.
Just want to clarify, it sounded like the right feedback if you were here, if you were watching, I think you could provide feedback.
Yeah, so on Sunday, the agendas will go out for the entire week, and on those meeting agendas, there will be a link. It's not active yet for use, but it will be published at that time, and it will be. And so that link will be open at least through the finalist interviews, and then it'll be up to the board to decide if they want to keep that open up until, I guess, 14, or close it at the conclusion of the second interview.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, comments? All right, if there's none, we'll move on to item five, appointment of the interim superintendent. Turn it over to Karen.
Should I read the motion first? Listen.
Sure.
I move the Board of Education to appoint, adopt the following resolution as presented. Be it resolved that the board hereby appoints Dr. Randy Lippa as acting superintendent of the district effective July 17, 2023, and as interim superintendent of the district effective August 1, 2023, until such time that a new superintendent is hired and begins employment for October 30, 2023, whichever occurs first, pursuant to the general terms and conditions sent forth in the attached draft employment agreement. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board president to negotiate any needed and/or appropriate language changes in the draft employment contract as may be approved by the district's legal council, whereafter the board president and board secretary may execute such final employment agreement on behalf of the district. And also, I would like to, as chair of the interim superintendent hiring committee, along with Paul and Megan, who couldn't be here today, I would like to read Dr. Lippa's credentials to the community. Dr. Randy Lippa is a recently retired school superintendent with extensive statewide experience in school and administration and policy. Dr. Lippa has served 18 years as a school superintendent, with the last six years of his career in the position of superintendent of the Wayne County Regional Education Service Agency. Wayne RESA is the largest education service agency in the state, providing leadership programs and service to 33 public school districts and 108 public school academies in Wayne County. Dr. Lippa has a 30-year career in public education. Prior to joining Wayne RESA, he was with Livonia Public Schools, one of the 10 largest school districts in the state, and served as their superintendent for 12 years. In 2014, he was honored as the Region Nine Superintendent of the Year in Michigan, as well as Administrator of the Year for the Michigan PTSA. Dr. Lippa is well-respected in the education community and is a strong advocate for public education. He has also served locally and in the state level on legislative and policy committees and is frequently interviewed on television and radio, providing insight and feedback on educational issues and proposals. Dr. Lippa holds a bachelor's degree from Hillsdale College, a master's degree in educational leadership from Wayne State University, and a doctor of philosophy, philosophy degree in educational leadership from Michigan State University. Go Green.
Any comments, discussion?
Well, there's a motion without a second. So.
Second, discussion?
Did you want to talk a little bit more about what the committee did?
Sure. Yeah, the committee of three had two possible interim choices because of the timing and circumstances of our search. We chose the individual who we interviewed first, Dr. Lippa, and then we also interviewed the second candidate. We discussed the credentials of the two, and they both were highly credentialed, very successful individuals, but we made the difficult decision of hiring, or hopefully hiring, if everyone agrees, Dr. Lippa because of his background, his 12 years as a superintendent in Livonia, and his very good reputation in the community. So those are some of the factors, but we all agreed that he was the best candidate for the job. And I believe he hired some people in our community that are here today, so he has a good reputation within our community as well. He's been involved with people in our district. So I think he will bring the leadership that we need right now during this big transition period coming up in September, so.
All right. Thank you, Carolyn. Any further questions, discussion? Ready for a vote?
Sure.
All right, do a roll call vote. Trustee Noble?
Aye.
Trustee Van Gemmer?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee follow-on? So myself, Trustee Kumar, yes, so motion passes for zero.
And just so the board knows, Randy and I have already started working together. To me, I'm glad you voted yes. This is a no-brainer. Should be the easiest decision you have to make in the next 12 months. It'll bring a lot of stability to the district during the transition period. He also has a background in finance. He served as a CFO as well, so he knows that area, and I'll make sure Randy has everything he needs during the transition and after the transition as well. I will be available to him for anything he needs and make sure our students have what they need to be successful in school next year, which is the only thing that really matters at the end of the day.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Moving on, next item on the agenda, item six, appoint an investment officer and financial management authorizations. Turn it over to Karen for her comments.
I would suggest that the Board of Education name the interim superintendent, Dr. Lippa, as the investment and finance designee during the transition of my employment prior to someone being named to handle and manage the day-to-day oversight of banking and proceeds. I've shared information with Rebecca in a Google sheet of all the current banking accounts that we have, all of our contacts, all the phone numbers, but there needs to be somebody in charge at the top that can manage and monitor what's happening within the finance team. And so my recommendation would be that Dr. Lippa be named as interim when the permanent superintendent is named, then it transitions to that unless there is a hire for the assistant super finance, and then it would revert back to that position.
So is the intent to have a motion at the board meeting on July 27, or are we passing a motion today?
We will not be able to wait until July 27.
Karen's last dance tomorrow.
And I need to be removed, I need to be removed as the administrator.
Yes, to answer the question, yes, we're asking for it to be passed tonight.
Is Dr. Lippa to be aware of what moves and taking on that responsibility as well?
That, I don't, I don't know if he is or not.
I don't believe I discussed it with him or any other committee member.
When we spoke, he knew he was taking on the role of the superintendent, which this would be a horrible role. And if, as we are able to have somebody in place in this position, it can roll on.
And typically, that's what you'd see is in the vacancy, it would move up, it wouldn't be pushed down. So the, Trustee Kumar and myself had a transition meeting. So the trustee Kumar and myself had a transition meeting with the Dr. Hanson from Plant Run, with our auditing firm, that was a recommendation from them as well, that it should be pushed up. And it just helps protect the assets of the district, which at the end of the day is of my utmost concern.
It's an internal control authorization?
In a normal situation, if they were just to be that too, it's a superintendent.
That's why I don't think it's outside of the scope of his responsibilities. Like, it's a natural, if Pat was, if it was that kind of a situation, it would elevate Pat. Right, so then it's an assumption that that role should fill what those duties for now.
And if we end up on a temporary basis filling the assistant finance position through a contract, they're not a direct hire. And we should actually have the person get a direct hire. If Dr. Lippa is now looking to be a direct hire.
And he does have a finance background, he has served as a CFO before.
So let me draft the, so let me read this, folks, tell me if this sounds right. I move the Board of Education appoint Dr. Lippa as interim investment officer and that he be granted financial authorization for cash, wire transfer, and purchase, procurement card authorization?
And the purchasing card authorization is correct. And that way, we can remove myself as the administrator, and I can look the banks no tomorrow and put your name.
Right, you have to come off tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right?
We can't leave.
And they need somebody to be named.
Yes.
All right, ready for me to make the motion? All right.
Wait, 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 one second. Dr. Lippa starts on 17th?
Monday.
So, yeah.
So 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, I come off, right.
Correct. So should we stipulate that?
I put Dr. Lippa effective Monday.
Yeah.
July 17th.
Correct.
Nope. It's been on my mind.
I'm close. All right, so I move the Board of Education appoint Dr. Lippa effective Monday, July 17th, as the interim investment officer, and that he be granted authorization for cash, wire transfer authorizations, and procurement card authorization. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm just reading the document that Karen put forward regarding authorization of the just financial software. For today's purposes, would you make sure she wants to?
For today's purposes, we need to have Dr. Lippa named. So if we can vote on that, then we can follow up with the other component that I put in that memorandum to you guys.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll move to a roll. Do a roll call vote. Trustee Noble?
Yes.
Trustee Van Gammert?
Yes.
Trustee Fallon?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
And then to follow up on the other component that John was referencing, I did send a memorandum, email to the Board about, I copied Pat and Rebecca, and put forth my recommendations for this transitional planning. One of the things, if the board is willing to support, I will remove all my authorities from the financial software so that all the workflow authorities, anything that I would approve, that's removed, and I have the only access, that I will retain my laptop docking station and my dual monitors at my residence for the next 30 days. And that way, I can help assist with Dr. Lippa and any contractual person that comes in to help with finance, show them where files are at, where reports are at, to help them with the transition with some of these controls, because it's not going to be right, you know, right there. And so I'll do that after hours, obviously, I need to dedicate my time during the day to my regular job, but I'm happy to do that. I do care about this district, I care about our resources, and I care about our kids.
Thank you, Karen. Very much appreciated for all your support.
I'll be sure to get that meeting scheduled with you and Randy next week.
All right, moving on to item seven, event representation discussion. The Board of Education will discuss representation logistical considerations for ribbon cutting, chamber, and the robotics patent events scheduled for the next 90 days.
Karen, do you want to touch on each one of the events?
Yeah, so my understanding is that we have a couple of events where we need to make a decision on either date, time, location, or who's speaking. The first one is the breakfast with the superintendent. Now that we have named an interim superintendent, I assume that he would be presenting at that event alongside the Birmingham superintendent. Rebecca and I would support Dr. Lippa with his talking points and presentation over the month of July. And oftentimes, board members will sometimes drop into that event, also along with community members. So it's up to, the board can also appoint a different designee to attend that event if you think it's more appropriate, somebody else does that.
My recommendation is to ask Randy to represent the district well. It will be well received. Rebecca, if you could add it to the list of things I'm going with Randy. I think we'd be remiss to have anyone else speak at that opening day presentation we've been to before, other than Randy at this point. It shouldn't be anyone else, that's my personal opinion.
And for those that don't know, this is an annual event that the chamber hosts. Well, they coordinate, and then the two districts alternate, but it's a co-presentation by both school districts.
Are you calling Randy doing it?
Yeah. Are there a lot of community members that come?
Usually like 40 to 50.
Okay.
A lot of professionals, real estate agents.
But it wouldn't make sense to have anybody else there.
I don't, I don't think so. I think he's a great speaker.
Yeah.
Between what Rebecca and Karen, and, you know, I'll get them up to speed on some of the highlights, he can share it, so really a chance to showcase some things we're doing as a school district, we have a lot to showcase. And I think he'll do a phenomenal job adding it. It should be Randy the one that's speaking on behalf as interim superintendent.
And I usually attend that event also, I work with the videographers that day and the person with a similar position to mine in Birmingham. And so it should be a pretty seamless event for Randy to be able to kind of like move right into. And all board members are invited to attend, obviously.
This is the 25th?
It's August 8th, sorry, it is August 16th from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning, so it's before work. For some people. The second event is a robotics patent celebration, so this is stemming from a couple of years. This started before I joined the district. It's an event that the United States Patent and Trademark Office is working alongside our robotics coach and putting together. It sounds like a fantastic event. I've been working with them for a couple of weeks on it now. And we're looking, they've finalized a date of August 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be held downtown at the patent office, but there's also a virtual component in discussion with that pretty comprehensive team alongside people from, you know, Washington who are helping to support this event. We are looking to understand who the board would envision wanting to have a few moments to speak to represent the district at that event. Again, you would work alongside me with creating those talking points, but it would be an evening event if you do take on the representation for that event. The expectation would be that we would be able to be downtown. It seats about 50 people in their small space, and then other people would be able to tune in virtually.
Do you know what the participation is going to be from our Blackhawks team?
From my understanding, it will be pretty close to full participation at this point from the Blackhawks team. We're coordinating matching shirts and things along those lines. We do have a couple of people who have since graduated or moved on. Several of them are able to return for this event. We have pretty extensive involvement from different partnership organizations who were a part of this patent. And there is representation from different elements of the United States Patent and Trademark Office who will be there also. They have a pretty comprehensive marketing approach to this. This is something that they really want to highlight related to student achievement and voice, and they're very proud of this work. And they really want to highlight it on both a regional, state, and national level. So I do expect there to be media coverage, and it should be pretty exciting.
So there's no possibility of a larger venue, other than a room for 15?
Right now, they currently think that this is the best location for it, while offering a virtual component. There has been discussion in the last planning meeting around changing the venue to a different space within that same building, so it would still be in downtown Detroit.
Okay. And when would that get finalized?
Over the next couple of weeks. And we have another meeting coming up to start planning, to continue planning.
So Pat, what are your thoughts on Dr. Lippa or somebody from the board going?
My recommendation would be someone from the learning service team and at least one board member attending.
Okay.
Learning service team, because this is, I see it's a little more instructional base, and we also want, Randy's also going to have a lot of things to do as well. And at least one or two board members, if people are available. I mean, this doesn't happen every day. I've never, it's my 29th and a half year in education, I haven't heard of anything like this occurring with the student group, so it's pretty impressive.
There's also an interest in extending the invitation to Mr. Rubel as well. He was the principal of the building at that, at that time.
That would be another great candidate, having Jason go.
But we, I have not extended any invitation. We wanted to start with you being able to provide your, your direction.
The speaker, in my opinion, should be, you know, whether it's someone from Todd's team or Jason, should be the speaker, and just more there to support the achievement of the students. And obviously, you know, write up and publish on our new website and things like that. This is pretty good.
Has anyone expressed an interest in wanting to be the speaker?
I haven't, I haven't approached anybody. There will be student voice at that event, and the coach is working with students on who will speak. It was part of our RSVP that we worked with those students on, whether they would be comfortable with, you know, speaking, media interviews. And so we do have a list of students who will also speak. Depending on the layout of the final run of show, it might be like they each say a sentence or two, or it might be that they have a little bit more to say. We're still kind of working through that piece.
Well, I, we'll reach out to Michelle, I'll reach out to Michelle to see if she can be there, representing the board. But if she can't go, you know, obviously, one of us will be there for sure. I'm happy to go. If she can't make it, or one of us will be there.
I will, yeah, if I can be there, I'd like to.
Yeah, for sure.
So Karen, please work with Todd. Todd, identify whether it's going to be yourself or someone from your team. You'll reach out and invite Jason Rubel, so he can attend. And I would invite Angie as well. I think we'd be remiss not to invite both the leaders of the building that were there to attend the event.
Absolutely. The third one is the Pine Lake dedication ceremony. I met with them this morning at Pine Lake to kind of go over some logistics. We're looking at a pretty small kind of dedication ceremony to kick off kind of that partnership. They do anticipate that probably in the spring, they would have like a nice ribbon cutting event when they've been able to make progress in the space. That's really like community-focused, where families can come and enjoy the space. This is a little bit more ceremonial. There will be representation from their board at West Bloomfield, as well as someone from West Bloomfield Parks who'd like to speak. So they had reached out with interest to see who is available to speak and to attend from our board. They gave us a list of several dates to choose from. Their preference is to do it during the day because it's October, so they were looking at a morning event. However, we did discuss with, you know, with flexibility doing it in the evening, and they were totally on board with that also. The latest, we could start that event is probably 6:00 p.m., given that, you know, it gets dark around 7:00 in October. So we are ready to start kind of planning. They go to publication tomorrow on their fall guide, and so they need to know who will be speaking tonight. This was kind of their hard deadline was this evening. And then it will be out in all of West Bloomfield Homes, kind of promoting the date, time, and location. It goes to print tomorrow. So we just mostly for today, we just need to decide what day and time the board is able to commit to going.
So what are the choices of dates?
They're in the documents, there's no, so. I think we just pick one.
Pick one.
My opinion, the district is to just listen. Michelle is the speaker, and then Michelle can make it. The first thing, the speaker can say, Michelle can make it, and of course, you know, then we just go with it that way, that way they have someone ahead. And, you know, no, it's Dr. Shalberg, I mean, that doesn't mean you have someone else.
And I think that for, sorry, for the print piece of it, I don't think we need the name. I think we need the date, the time for the print piece. And then we would just say that Bloomfield Hill School's Board of Education will join, and then extend that through what the event will be.
I think it's going to just be kind of up in the air, so we should pick.
Yeah, and we could get dates, it's good for districts going to be there.
So AM or PM to start with that?
PM or 5:00?
PM, for sure, right, Michelle's got a long, right?
So October 12th is a Thursday, and that's a study session day.
That's a no?
Yeah.
Well, we could potentially start it at, you know, 5:00 o'clock, and then come to the study session if that's, if that's a preference. Right, but from my understanding, Michelle was comfortable with splitting the events up.
Was it a date that you just set for that?
To be October 12th.
So October 12th is a Thursday, 9th, 10th, 11th is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Do that whole week.
And September 26th, 27th, 28th, those are all, those are also a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I don't, in my opinion, I don't want to do it on a date that we have a meeting to live. I don't know, it would just be more enjoyable to, you know.
I mean, you don't want to make.
Appreciate the space, but, you know.
You don't want to rush around.
You don't want to make, if it is Michelle, I wouldn't want to make her rush, or whoever it is, honestly. So I would say Wednesday, I mean, it doesn't, we don't know what, I don't know her schedule. Someone will be there, and I hope.
September's a busy time, right, back to school? What about that Wednesday, 11th?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
Day before a study session, just need one of the seven people to attend.
Yep.
Kelly Hare was just hired as executive director for WB Parks. You met her before, she came with Joe Ketchum. So I am confident the partnership will continue far beyond just Pine Lake as we move forward. But if you look at some of the plans, remember what they talked about, this is an exciting time. This is a great set of amenities that are going to be added for our community at no charge to the school district whatsoever. And we're going to take that property, really enhance it, and do a lot of great things. And this is something that had been talked about for a decade before, that actually got done in the middle of COVID, as we were going through COVID. So, looks like the 11th?
October the 11th at 6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
I'll proceed with letting West Bloomfield know so that they can move it forward, and then next week or the week after, we'll start kind of promoting it on our end also. The last events from my understanding are the middle school ribbon cutting events. We've been working with the middle school principals on that. This really can look however the board envisions this event, event looking. Usually a ribbon cutting event is really a ceremonial event where we would invite media and elected officials. It would usually be no more than about an hour. There was some interest from the middle school administration in hosting that and then doing a big community, like school folk, school community, not wider community, but school community kickoff following that. At the time, I had thought, I think probably from the previous board, we had wanted to do those before board meetings to kind of try to keep things condensed, but it seems like that is changing now. So I think from our, from our perspective, we're totally comfortable doing it on most evenings that you feel would work, at a time that you think would work.
Sorry, I didn't want to change the way things are done. I was just a thought previous, I don't know how it's going to go.
So these are both dates which sync up with either committee or the whole, or a board meeting?
Initially, we had talked about doing it before the board, the September study session for North Hills, and then before the September board meeting for South Hills. We had talked about doing it for about an hour ahead of time. We would invite media, do the whole, the ceremony, there were. We would invite media, do the whole, the ceremony. There would be um either Dr. Southward or somebody else would provide comment from the board. The interim or permanent superintendent would, would speak. And we would then move forward with the school community being able to do kind of their celebratory kickoff. But we could also have the school community do their celebratory kickoff in September on a date that works best for them. And then do a ribbon cutting on an event and on a day in October that works specifically for the board's schedule also. So it depends on, on what you're, what you're looking for and what time range you'd like to see it.
So right now it's scheduled for start around five o'clock, right?
Yeah, so we had um.
Five time, starting with super.
About five ten, we would start.
It was fun. I mean, one thing about these, the difference from that, the park and this is that probably we're gonna have to go out, you know, every day. The clothes, you know, as soon as the ties and everything. Whereas like at the park, I have, it feels more casual. So coming straight from there to here is fine, you know, or, or coming to a meeting. That's my perspective. Um, but I could do it either way. And there's only four of us here, so it's kind of frustrating, but not.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that big of a decision.
I think it's gonna be easiest for most people to do it the same via the board meeting, but so.
I don't think Michelle could make it at, at five o'clock.
That's true. Yeah, that's true.
She mentioned that last time she can.
I don't know. I, I, I believe if we do this, then we should have a plan for another speaker.
She said she wouldn't make it.
I don't believe that she can make it in time.
Now she, of course, won't be there.
Yeah.
Karen, how soon, do you need this decision tonight?
It would be great to be able to start planning it if, if it corresponds with the, with the community focused event. Because the P T Os would like to really start planning into and announcing what their event will look like and start kind of pooling parents and planning into that. If we're thinking that, that the community side of the event is its own event and they can do it on their own timeline. Then I think we have additional time to decide as a board when you'd like to do it.
Is there not really time for Michelle to make it? Current as well, it's that kind of, because same thing.
I think she really is not able to get to many places before six is what it sounds like.
Can we wait till Monday?
Yeah, we will be here.
Yeah.
Michelle be here Monday, right?
Yeah, and we've talked, we've spoken with Michelle and she's actually the one who asked us to put it on the agenda for tonight to identify a speaker.
Oh, just identify speaker of the day.
Hold it.
I think she said to start it later. Is that possible or not?
So I mean, I, I did put something in here that if we do shift everything down by a half hour, that means that our board meeting would start at seven. So I guess the other consideration is, as a board, are you comfortable doing this and leaving almost immediately to come back to booth? Or are you going to want to be part of the celebration and, and talk with people? Like, I, I don't know. But because we're recording all of our meetings live and everything, we'll need a decision on what your, what the approach should be.
I mean, I personally feel that we should have it the same day as all the um community events to show our oneness with each other and our care of the student body and what's happened with all the changes and to celebrate. We gotta have stuff to celebrate.
I mean, if you're open to doing it on a night that is different from a board meeting, then I can certainly take this back to both middle school administrations and ask them what dates work at a six P M. Start, which would allow Michelle the ability, and not just Michelle, but all of us who are working and have a hard time getting somewhere for five o'clock to be able to start at six. I think that that would work just fine. I think that five was a little bit um early even for our, you know, parents who are planning that. So a six P M. Start would allow all of them the ability to not, you know, do the big community kickoff until about seven. And, and then in September, we do have a little bit more, you know, time there. And there might be another date that they can do it on. There will be another date that they can do it in September or October.
I mean, this is a pretty big celebration to just rush out of there. So I don't know, I think I would like to celebrate, you know.
There'll be a large turnout. This will be.
It's gonna be like the groundbreaking.
Big community event in the buildings. If you haven't been recently, I guess if you haven't, especially North Hills, it, it's unbelievable. Instructional spaces are second to none. So you will wanna go in, people will wanna talk to you. And if it's after a couple of weeks of school, you'll probably get lots of different feedback at that point. Different day would be better.
And there would be like um a couple of different levels of how the community can engage and see these spaces. So um with your permission, I'll go back, I'll work with the middle school administration. I'll ask them to give us three dates with a six P M. Start. Rebecca can then take those and pull the board and we can go with the date that has the most attendance for each of them. And then there will be other opportunities. So this event would be specifically for our Board of Education and our, you know, North Hills community and then South Hills community. But then we will have events where it's open to the entire community in October and November for them to be able to come and get tours of the spaces. So um, you know, if you're a taxpayer who voted for this bond and you wanna come in and see it, we'll host tours um for them to be able to see it also. So this would really be like a school specific celebratory event. And then we would um additionally have later ones. Once all of that's ironed out, we'll share with you um kind of a more concrete fall agenda of all of those transitional opportunities for both staff, students, community and larger community to be able to see our new spaces.
Wait, sounds great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, can we say like early August?
So I'll send a doodle around probably the first week of August.
Oh, sorry. No, end of Jul- July twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, we'll have the dates for the ribbon cutting. The more comprehensive overview will probably be into middle of August.
Okay.
Okay.
When principals are back and.
And we would start promoting those in August too or something?
The ribbon cuttings, we would start definitely promoting um in our back to school.
And then the P T O groups, are they going to be getting the word out on their own too, I guess, probably so?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that they're, I know that they're eager and excited to start planning both of these. So um, I'll get in touch with both Jason and Randy tomorrow.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Um, next item on the agenda, item eight, framework for the July twenty-seventh board meeting agenda. You should all have a copy of that, draft agenda. Item one, call to order, attendance, pledge of allegiance. Item two, administrative appointments. Principal at Eastover and principal at B H H S. Public comment, superintendent report, president's report. Superintendent search update. Um, consent agenda. Board business. Request to award bid as for asbestos abatement at Eastover. Paging system at B H H S and I A. Purchase of iPads for the elementary labs.
Do you know, is that bond money or no?
Which one?
For the iPads?
iPads is bond and then paging systems as capital equipment.
Okay.
This one was on here before. It was deferred. It was deferred. So we've already seen this before. It's just wasn't ready last time.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything you've asked the board about the way I've had you back to you on that you thought maybe you should be on this agenda?
Um, no, I like to keep my agenda short.
Well done.
I actually have.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I would like to add something on the agenda. Uh, I would like to create a committee, add this on the agenda for a resolution to work on policies that address the process before allowing outsiders into our district facility throughout the school district. The policies would cover public events, like would not cover public events, like concerts or sporting events. Only current policies that would have the school district address like beyond school volunteers. Did that make sense, what I just said?
A hundred percent, but. Do you want to put that on the study sessions with them next time or is this something you have prepared for a meeting?
You know, I was actually curious about it too because we did get, and I shared with the board, our annual policy renewal from our, from Miller Johnson. And there's a, a whole lot that I haven't even been able to look at yet. And so um I was hoping to bring that to August too. And I'd like to take a look just to see what our current policy says and if there's anything in there.
I guess there's policies on school volunteers currently. We probably need to relook at that as a small committee and then come back with recommendations how to update them to include other things.
So in general, I mean, they, they used to be in the past, uh, subcommittee for policy, right?
Yes.
And, and so you probably just need to reinstate that with, with the current board. Just identify board members who will volunteer to do that.
Okay.
And it would be a good time because we do have all those updates.
What was that? It was generally that one board member.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I started, like, I wanted to look at it, but it's a lot. So I haven't digested it. But it is a good time to go through that and rather than just say, yep, sounds good.
Would you like to volunteer?
I will volunteer.
All right. If you have a volunteer.
I don't mind reading a hundred and fifty pages.
All right.
You're a glutton for points.
Yeah.
Are there any other volunteers?
I feel bad just putting on one person. Um.
We can split up the work a little bit.
Is this specific to a certain, certain policy or agenda?
I think it would be in check because to Rebecca's point, well, not. I would say specifically about the updates that we have in front of us. And maybe Carolyn's suggestion to at least research. Is it everything policy? Probably not.
Okay.
I think her suggestion would be, we're gonna have people come into our buildings, which we expect to uh, in certain way to the assembly and what type of authority we have for the construction building, you know, or what kind, what type of background checks. Do you have that kind of stuff? I think what Rebecca's talking about are the policy updates from Clark Hill.
Yeah, from kind of, and Miller's, I think. Yeah, but I, I don't, I have to look in there too. But I wanna see because there, you know, sometimes there's updates to our, you know, policies. I wanna see, but I understand this one is multifaceted, so.
There's policy updates and then there's new policy or just to, to something that would be new policy, whether that's board policy or like big P policy or little P policy, um, there's something that needs to be put in place based on the recommendations that come out. So I know Mr. Clark would be willing to work with us on that as well.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
Okay, so are we gonna add that to the August study session agenda?
So to, so would they be working with Mr. Clark and then bringing that to the August study session? Since we have a couple of weeks when we're gonna be talking about all the policies?
It's gonna be pretty busy.
Right, I know.
So maybe just put it on the study session, I guess, a reminder so that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you know, Carolyn, I brought this up, let's make sure.
Sure.
Well, that's why I thought a committee might be appropriate. You said we can split up the work and work on our own time and then bring back suggestions.
So what, what does?
Study session.
Oh, yeah, true. Wait, we're here four days next week, never mind.
Updates, you, those do have to go through first and second reading, don't they, Keith?
Yes, they still go through first and second reading. Um, this is scanning. A lot of times it's updates based on like law changes, like the great reading, reading law change. So we're gonna have a lot of updates there, but it's gonna go basically taking a lot of language out essentially. It's gonna be pretty straightforward.
I mean, how have we, how have we gone, how has the board in the past gone through that? Did they have like a subcommittee that looked at the updates?
The last few times um I received them, I did go through with a board member. We went through all of them and talked about it. About which ones seemed like we're gonna have, probably had more conversation about as opposed to we're changing. Everybody's gonna go, yeah, well, that makes sense.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so we would go through those and then we bring them back and we start with the attorney's written language. So we purchased this through Miller Johnson. This policy update has gone to all of their clients. This is not specific necessarily to us, right? So they're writing this for that. So as we deviate from what our attorneys write in this, now we have to be very careful because any new changes, we have to go back to our language and make sure that's matched. So we go through, read them, um, and then we go through a first reading and then a second reading.
Mostly accept, edit or reject.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not suggesting that I wanna go through and like redline and try to deviate. But like, I do wanna make sure we understand anything that we're just getting updates rather than, you know, signing off. So I, that's what was my point is, did we ever have, it sounded like we just had one person that worked with you on it and that's probably sufficient.
We did do it at study sessions too, because it's required to have it at two separate meetings. And I think it was even more than two.
So we don't, there was more than two.
Not necessarily. But I mean, you, when we get these updates.
You'll see.
You'll see and then you can make a determination, I think.
Sure.
And there's, isn't there usually explanation in there, Keith, in the memo?
A lot of times there's explanation in the memo based on, and sometimes the.
We have some reviews about like where you hear the explanation a time.
Yeah, I mean, some, they, they always provide the explanation. Sometimes some of the articles will have a little longer explanation because they're more meaning, meaning change where some don't have any explanation because it's pretty self-evident. It's too large. So there's great reading law. It doesn't completely remove the answer.
And what we can do too is if there's questions, what I do is I compile them all. I send them in a document to Miller Johnson. They respond to it and I route that to the full board, like a communication protocol. So then, you know, after that first reading or even before, if it needs to be, then there's, you know, everybody has the same understanding.
And, and, and so you're aware, when you get this, you're going to see everything in order. So you'll see board policy and then immediately under that, if there's any changes that are to administrative reps. So you do not vote on administrative reps. You only vote on the board policy. Administrator reps fall under superintendent's office.
Okay, makes sense.
We spent more than two sessions on it last year.
I, I attended, I attended the board meetings where you guys were going to that action, I remember.
Yeah, I think I did too, one of them.
We have space.
I mean, yeah, I, I, it makes sense. Okay.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Could we have restart our bond financial reviews again with, with the bond team or PMC, Bart Mello? Those, those Friday meetings with, with the bond subcommittee.
Okay. Do you have a, a date that you want us?
We've been doing it every other Friday, right, in the past? So can we restart those starting next Friday?
I will check.
Because it's been a, it's been a month since we had an update.
Sure.
And then also get Dr. Lepa to speed or get him introduced to it. I mean, he should probably join those discussions. All right. Anything else on board business items A through E? Keith, what is A D Bloomfield's associate of instruction assistance contract approval?
We had two bargaining contracts that expired on June thirtieth. So we've been bargaining the bulk of those. The B H A I A is the instructional assistance. They're um all staffed over at me like. We've got a tentative agreement with them. They're in a process right now where they're taking that back to their members and voting. I believe they said the vote will be tomorrow. So we'll have a definitive tomorrow. I don't anticipate anything other than that approval from that, from that group. Um, at which point that I, I bring that to you. I would offer, rather than trying to fit in a closed session that we, that if you would like to have some one-on-one meetings or two on, you know, two at a time or three at a time, I think it's a much better use of our time as opposed to doing a closed session. And the other group of secretaries, and we are getting closer with them. Hopeful that by midweek, next week, we should be able to get a T A with them too. So I'm hopeful to bring that, because both sides have the, have the goal of being able to be done so that we can get it to you on the 27th.
Is that the office and air professionals or is that separate?
No. So BHAPA, which you, it may be written down there, is this umbrella group that encompasses two different groups, each of which have their own separate bargaining unit. So we have a para unit that's under BHAPA and we have a secretarial unit under BHAPA. The last time we bargained, we had a two-year contract with the clerical and we had a three-year contract with the parish. Now they're off cycle. That was somewhat intentional too, so that we can have a better negotiation process as opposed to trying to balance both parties at the same table. So while it's called BHAPA, it's, it's really just this arm.
Got it. So does this agenda title make sense? Like, I, I spelled it out and then it would be a contract approval. I don't know.
And, and, does it make sense? Yes. I think we, I think if you look at their contract that's currently online too, they refer to themselves in, as the Michigan Educational Support Personnel Association, which is on the, on the cover of their contract. I don't know that that's not appropriate either. So. We know who we're talking about anyways. So. BHAPA can actually give proof that the parish fall under that as well. And they do not have a new contract.
Right. So I'll change it to what's on trade's guarantee.
I think that would be. And I may even put secretaries and then the name of their group.
So that's the full agenda for the 27th.
That is what I know of at this time.
Okay. All right. So can we wrap up item eight? Item nine, planning for the 23, 24 board meeting agenda. We've got three members absent here today. And we should probably defer this. If folks are okay with it to the. Makes the most sense. Really need everyone here so everyone has the ability to provide input on the major topics to be discussed during next year's study sessions.
Or if we just wanted.
You know, we could pass anything we want. But we probably should lean on the side of cohesion.
No, no, that makes sense. Let's defer.
All right. We'll defer that one.
Can we defer to August 10th then? Does that make sense?
Yes.
We need to make a motion for that or no? I don't know. Probably not.
No need to motion. I don't think so. Motion for that.
No, I don't think so.
All right. Anything else on the agenda that like board would like to bring up for tonight? Okay?
Just thank you, Karen, for your years of service. We all appreciate you.
Thank you, Karen.
You're most welcome.
We'll be sad to see you though, tomorrow. Don't be a stranger.
Never. I feel like this isn't the last time we'll be talking to Karen. I'm sure it won't.
We have her number. We'll track it up.
It hasn't changed.
She's got it.
Change it.
For us and Wardenby to change it.
New phone, who this?